The SVU ESD, please. Noting the first agenda item being the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance. So for a little bit of time, please. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And given the dates, I know we have at least one board member who is a veteran of the U.S. Armed Forces. I would just like to recognize anyone who has served in uniform on the board. I know Dick, I don't know Tony, I don't know Scott. Yeah? Anyone over here? Nor I, but thank you very much, both gentlemen. Glad you're with us tonight. Thank you very much. For sure, for sure. Moving on, second agenda item is public comments. So we would open the floor to anyone who would like to make public comments. Very good. Moving on to our consent agenda. We have the minutes from our last meeting in October. We have a nomination form, which although it is not noted on the consent agenda, was in the board packets. And we have two field trip forms. In terms of the minutes, I would propose a, there's a typo in there, Richard. Page one, line 24, you write the word nine, when I think you meant the word none.
Oh, yeah.
But other than that, anyone have any other proposed changes to the minutes? Great, seeing none.
Motion to approve.
Very good, so we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Great. Moving on to agenda item number four, finance. So we would invite Director Gordon to the mic, please.
Thank you for the treasurer's report. I will give you more instead.
So the treasurer's reports were posted for both September and October, to a F Y I. Director Gordon, could you just speak about the tax anticipation notice, please?
Sure. So typically, well, I shouldn't even say typically, because some of the previous individual school boards had to regularly borrow an anticipation of tax collection or property tax collection turnover to the school district. This is a little bit later than what we would normally see because of just everything coming together in the union district and not being terribly sure as to what the cash flow is going to look like. So our treasurer did put a cash flow together and requested proposals from banks and decided to go with People's United, a line of credit. And so this will sustain the union school district until taxes are turned over, which should be early December. And it is a line of credit, not an actual loan with an investment account, and it is due to be paid back by the end of December, which we should be in good financial shape to do so.
Any questions for Director Gordon about the anticipation notice? Great, thank you very much. So we have the Vermont Arts Council grant to Monument.
We need to have a motion to approve.
To approve the test.
But then we also need to have a motion to wait for the resolution.
Thank you. Could we have a motion to that effect, please?
Motion.
Circle. Thank you very much, Scott, Toby and Dick. First and second, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes, thank you very much.
There are just three places that need to be signed, and they do have the flag.
You were not speaking to your arts council. What was it? So I'm pleased to share that we are the recipient of a $2,500 grant from the Vermont Arts Council. We have been working with the Vermont Symphony Orchestra, and this is our second year as a partner elementary school. They've come into our school and provided residencies to our students here, and so we're very excited about continuing and about this grant. It's a great sum of money, and we're looking forward to having them return.
So we have a motion to accept that grant. Please see the motion. Thank you, we'll call Angie Beech to it. You started talking about Angie Beech. We'll call Angie and Cynthia. Any further discussion or questions for Principal Colley? Great, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none and it passes. Very good. Well, congratulations. Principal Colley.
Before we move on, we did not, the treasurer's report, we did not make a motion to accept that.
So I have the last few meetings asked for a motion, and every time I do that, the superintendent mentions to me, it's just an advisory thing and we don't need to actually approve it. It's true.
It's just on there, that's why it says action request.
It says action request.
So I'll make that, that's my oversight for leaving that notation on there for action requests.
I know that it's a practice that some boards have done, but what legal councils advise us, it is the treasurer's report, so we're not, our action neither confirms or endorses it in any way, it's the treasurer's report, we're just receiving it.
Receiving it. So the next item under finance is the Pownell Bus Contract, which, again, just, I'm sure we're all aware, but the, what was the Pownell School District gifted buses to the town of Pownell, and our discussions have been, even though Do Four holds the contract for transporting our students, sometimes Do Four buses aren't available, or they need to cut field trips short in order to accommodate support schedules. And so hopefully, we can come to some sort of agreement with the town of Pownell for the occasional, at least, use of their buses. So I have a few questions on this, Director Gordon. Generally speaking, how does this compare to the contract that exists with Do Four? And specifically with, looking at page two, section one, the rental, it gives a per mile rate, it gives a hourly wage for the driver, talks about security deposits and late charges. Are those in keeping or similar to the Do Four contract?
Our contract with Do Four is structured quite differently.
Okay.
So it's not really a comparison of apples to apples.
Okay.
I will tell you that the guts of what I was looking for really is right there in that, you know, the rental section. I don't know if you have other questions. I don't know if everybody had a chance to read through it.
So I have a few more questions.
Okay.
So also on that page, the lessors obligations, so the town of Pownell's obligations, it talks about keeping the vehicles comprehensively insured with a reputable insurance company throughout the duration of the agreements. Am I correct and am I remembering correctly that the Do Four contract specifies a $5 million insurance policy?
We require that in our RFPs, so that is what they hold.
So one, I, part of me is feeling that we need to also include that specific insurance amount in this contract, but I put that out there. Then on the second.
I can tell you that they did provide a certificate of insurance, it's only at $1 million.
Okay.
Which is comparable to the level of coverage that we had when Pownell owned the buses. However, we also had an umbrella policy up to $10 million, so we were covered in excess.
And the town does have an umbrella.
We have an umbrella. They do, but it doesn't cover the auto, because I did get a copy of that as well. So, I mean, if through the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, if there's an amendment that they can put in there to include the bus coverage, then they will be covered in comparable levels, but at this point.
We asked the town administrator to make this simple, not to make it complicated or to complicate it, because here it is November, and we've already lost two months of transporting our students on field trips. So I'm hoping that the changes could be simple, and we can take it to the select board. The T A is not there right now, and I know the select board is really willing to just get this out and going.
Okay. Director Gordon, could you say more about what the Vermont League of Cities and Towns might be able to do to have the, yeah?
They are the insurer, so the, when the town of Pownell took over the ownership of the buses, they actually had to seek coverage through a separate entity.
Okay.
So they're covered with Liberty Mutual, and that policy, but all of their other coverage is through the Vermont League of Cities and Towns.
Okay. Then on what is page two, the lesses obligations. It talks, on 3.7, it talks about how we as the lesses, this school district as the lesses, would be responsible for paying parking fines, speeding fines, and towing expenses for illegal parking.
I think it's an issue with that clause.
Okay, me too, me too.
Is there any way that, maybe Mr. Popey or somebody can go with Angie and I to the town?
We often do go to meet with the town manager, but then.
Yeah, no, we don't.
Right, so we certainly, we certainly can make ourselves available to go to the select board.
And we can take a list of the things that we want to change on this, because I agree, I totally agree.
Yeah.
Again, this was supposed to be simple and quick, and instead it was long and.
Because after the last select board meeting, and the town manager's commissar, I had reached out to him and said that we would be willing to go and meet with him, but then he was unavailable, so absolutely would be willing to go.
Maybe we can make a list of what we need to change in.
Yeah, and I do think the agreement can be simplified, and I don't want to get into a situation where we're, I mean, in some clauses, it seems like we're leasing the buses, so therefore we would be keeping them, and we don't want that, we just want to reduce them when we need to, and that's basically.
Yeah, if we can take our issues to them, I'm sure we can get this corrected, and then maybe we can not have to wait till another month, or would we have to?
Well, I mean, if, I think maybe this board could approve sort of the ideal contract. If we tonight could identify what the ideal contract would contain, and if this board could approve, say yes, we would roll with that, then if the town of Pownell is agreeable to the ideal contract, I think that would hold water, in terms of getting this approved tonight so we can move forward tonight.
We just need a list of what we need to change.
Yep. Also on section three on page two, it talks about, 3.3 talks about us, this board, this district, having the responsibility to, quote, "control the behavior of the passengers." And the policy, the policy committee did a lot of work last week on the policy that governs student behavior, student discipline, behavioral interventions, and I'm wondering if we need to, given that this is a contract, if we need to have the language of 3.3 jive with what our policy language is. If we don't, then great, that makes it easier, but if we should, then let's address that now.
What is the difference? Is it different language?
Yeah, so the, we did not walk away with hard copies of what was agreed to at the policy meeting, but the, what the lawyer said is that you can't, you can't control, you can't guarantee, like, there are absolutes that you don't want to have in policy language, and I'm wondering if that also carries over to not wanting it in contractual language. I think we can make reference to the fact that, you know.
That would go along with the bus rules.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, I used to be a bus driver for five years, so we had rules on the bus about behavior.
So, and that, of all, of the things that I've raised tonight, that's probably the most middling of them all, but I, since we're working on those policies, I thought it might make sense to at least address it here.
I had a question as well.
Let me just, I have one more, Scott. So even though this, this contract talks about the SVSU being the lessie, I'm wondering if we can include language in this that says that these buses are included for students from any school. The way that some of the conversation has been covered in the banner, and I'm not, this is not a criticism of the banner, I just don't, I've not been at these meetings where it's been discussed, so I don't know what the conversation has been, but there's been a sense in reading the banner articles that this, the thought from the Pownell Select Board is that this would be for the students who attend Pownell Elementary, and I don't know if that's actually what was said at those meetings or not, but I wonder if it makes sense to include language in the contract that says these buses can be used for any of the schools in the SVSU.
Yeah, I just think that if, if Pownell has, Pownell would be the first one. I mean, if somebody like Shasberry or something, I know there's no problem in using it for other schools, but.
Pownell gets the first.
Pownell gets the first if it did.
Tell me, what was the, what was the conversation at the, at the select board meeting where that was the idea?
I think it came from, I don't remember word for word, it was a long meeting.
It was a long meeting, but I think it's because it's the town of Pownell, and I think they just assumed.
So I think we shouldn't then, I mean, this is new, like, this is a thing that we're all kind of getting used to and working, working within the new system of it being one big, one big school district to cover all the elementary schools. So I think if, I understand, we are having some difficulty grasping that, I have no doubt that the towns that make up the new SVU ESD are also struggling with that, so let's make it easy for everyone to include that language in the contract that says, this contract applies to all the elementary schools without even a priority list in there. That's my thought.
Yeah, I think all elementary schools on a first come, first served basis is the way it should be.
Yeah.
If the district's going to pay for it, that's the way.
Right.
It should be.
Are there other thoughts from the board about, I think I understand where the town of Pownell is coming from, but are there any members of this board who agree with what the town of Pownell seems to be proposing? Are there any other questions about what is in this contract?
Can you make a list?
Yeah.
Now, Chris, of what we want to include, and I'll make a motion that representative of this board go to the select board at Pownell and authorize the chair to sign if those changes are made.
Yeah, we need a, we need a list of what.
Yeah.
So we're not all over the place.
So the only bit that I've raised tonight that I don't think we have a resolution to yet is 3.3, which is the, our obligation to control the behavior of the passengers. Are we good with that being how it is, or should we make some proposed changes to that language?
What did you say? What was the policy?
Well, I'm going to turn to Dick, and I'm going to turn to Leon if I could, Leon being the chair of the policy committee. Do you recall exactly what the recommended language was around, to take out control and ensure and put in what exactly?
I don't remember reading, I mean, what, in my practice, but the school bus policy takes into consideration that these students are students of the districts, and all the policies apply to them, whether they're standing on the bus line, or whether you rent a bus from a specific bus company, their behavior, their activities, and all belong to the policies of the school district. So no matter what Pownell has, all of our students are supposed to behave in accordance to our policies.
So I think there are four proposed changes, and this is how I would suggest the language be, and people can make a motion on this or not. So to modify subsection 2.2 to include a $5 million coverage, to modify the language of 3.3 to say that the supervisory union and school employees will respond to student behavior in accordance with the SVSU policies, to strike subsection 3.7, which talks about us paying for a driver's speeding fines and illegal parking fines, and to include language that this contract is applicable to all of the schools in the SVSU on a first come, first served basis.
So do you want to make it SVSU or SVU ESD?
Well, this.
U S E D, I believe.
Well, the SV, this contract is made out to the SVSU as the, as the lessie. So the way that the contract from Pownell, from the town of Pownell reads is for the whole SVSU. Now, I wouldn't mind if this was just for the SVU ESD, but I don't know that we necessarily have the power to do that.
Transportation contracts should be coming through the SU.
Well, I mean, not necessarily those states.
Well, if we can, I'm all in favor of making this an SVU ESD, I agree with what Angie was saying. Make this an SVU ESD contract and not for the whole SVSU.
It makes more sense.
Okay, so we'll make that a list of five things then. Change the lessie to the SVU ESD, and then those four points that I just articulated.
Is there, is there an estimate as to what the usage, what the usage potential?
How many did we do last year's field trips? Thirty-two?
Thirty-two.
Thirty, I think we did like thirty-two field trip bus years. That's pre-K through sixth.
Thirty-two, pre-K through six.
Because.
And that's one school.
With that in mind, I would move to authorize the chair to sign the contract under the conditions that those five items listed are agreed to by the Pownell Select Board.
Okay, and I'll write that down. Okay, so we have a first from Dick, a second from Angie. Any further discussion on this?
I have other changes.
Please. Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Certainly, I can email them either kind of, you know, in real world, like, we're not going to process them in fourteen days, and we have a standard of forty-five days, so if that matters, that's what I want to hear when they.
And I think where that came from is the select board meet every week, and I guess they don't realize the school board meets once a month, because that was the first thing I threw out in my mind.
When is their next meeting?
Thursday night.
Should be Thursday, so I'll double check.
I have negotiations in Bennington Thursday, so I would not be able to go this Thursday. But possibly we can get someone to go.
And then in section 3.1, we would not be providing all written permission forms for the riders to the town. All those permissions, let's say, in the schools. And then I think there's just some language clarification that we need to make about leasing the bus versus, you know, the bus remaining on the town's lot versus, you know, as like, like, the way that 3.8 reads that we're going to keep control of the bus for the duration of the contract, and the contract itself actually doesn't have any parameters in terms of timing on it either, so it doesn't identify a duration, so we would need to identify that as well.
Do you have an recommendation?
This was a one-year.
Year to year, probably. So through, through the end of June.
Okay. So Dick, do you want to modify your motion to reflect the changes that Director Gordon has recommended?
Well, I'd be glad to amend the motion to include, insert.
Do you want a second to the amended motion? Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Great, thank you, everyone. Moving on to committee reports. Dick, could you please give us an SVSU report, please?
We've started the superintendent's evaluation. Our second meeting was actually tonight. That will proceed according to Policy 2600 and culminates in the public evaluation in We, several of us, Leon, myself, Art Haco, and Jim, were part of the V SBA Annual Conference in Lake Maury, where we talked about things like professional-based learning, the portrait of a graduate, flexible pathways, and a variety of educational initiatives that we want to look at going down the road as part of a retreat, where we can plan goals, put some ideas together, get on a common path, and that will be even more critical as Arlington and Sandgate join our group here, so that we're all speaking with a similar voice.
That's it. Great, thank you. Any questions for Dick? All right, Tony, could you please give us an update on the facilities committee, please?
Sure. We met and we went over the projects that had already been budgeted and already, the money was already in, in the three elementary schools in Bennington and Shasberry School. We went through some of the projects, obviously they'll be put on hold until spring, and some that we're going forward with. We talked about budgeting for the future and coming up with a five-year plan for all the schools, so that we can outlook, you know, any potential big projects that are coming up, reference, you know, something like the Shasberry's ventilation project, or if somebody has a, I know that this school, we're looking at a roof getting done in this school. We have, we're starting to talk about possibly getting an elevator for Bennington Elementary School, it's a two-story school with no access to the second floor for handicap. So we talked about starting to look at and acquiring some ideas from engineers on how much that would cost, so we can plan for it. So it was really a very simple meeting for the first one, but, you know, we got some stuff out. We talked, Kevin was not there for Pownell, he couldn't make it.
Did he bring a list?
What's that?
Did he bring a list?
Uh, no, no, there's no projects identified from Pownell, but.
Is it included? Is it included in the comments?
The upcoming projects, you mean? Yeah, okay. Yeah, I meant ones that hadn't gotten done yet, that's what I meant, but yeah, future projects. But again, we're working on a five-year, and Renee typically sits down with these guys and starts working and getting ideas, and so we can plan for it. Because now, as we know, all this money is one now, so, you know, we're going to have some years where one school's going to need a lot of work, and, you know, the next year it may be another school, and, you know, that's how it's got to work, so we're all one now, so.
When is the next meeting?
We have not planned the next meeting yet. We're not going to meet once a month or anything like that, so it's probably, I don't know, when did you think that you were possibly going to start talking to these guys about?
I'm doing it through my budget meetings right now, and that really is my focus probably for the next two months.
Right, so it won't be for at least.
That's it. Great, any questions for Tony? Very good. And as for policies, we did a lot of work at the last policy committee meeting. We looked at four policies, specifically 50-50, which is the discipline of pupils, 50-65, which addresses verbal and physical assault of employees, 5400, which regards student safety, and 5405, which regards behavioral interventions. Spent a lot of time in executive session discussing some of them, open session for most of it. We had our lawyer there, who recommended a lot of changes essentially to bring us in compliance and to have our policies parallel what is in statute, but a lot of good work happened. So those are going to the SVSU, and then they'll filter down to the member schools of the SVSU, so they'll be coming to us shortly. So moving on to agenda item six, educational matters, and we would turn the floor over to Principal Colley.
Thank you, and officially welcome to Monument Elementary School. I hope you enjoyed the tour and seeing our community here. I trust you've read my report, so I am not going to read it to you, but I wanted to just, for the public, highlight also some of those things in our report. Our family engagement opportunities. We highlighted our professional learning focusing on trauma-sensitive schooling, our grant, which we spoke to, and thank you for accepting that grant for our school. One of the items that wasn't in my report, which we had just received, was we are, have been acknowledged as a school of merit from the Vermont PBIS state team, so we're very proud of that, and I'm sharing that with you for the first time. And then, again, just kind of reiterating that I really want to thank you for allowing me to share the great works of our community here, and as they say, a picture is worth a thousand words. So I've placed a hundred pictures on the table there, I would encourage you to peruse them before you leave, and that's about 100,000 words that I'm sharing with you through our pictures. And last but not least, I would like to share with you, I'm going to pass these around, please join us tomorrow for World Kindness Day, Mr. Rogers' Cardigan Day. So this is for tomorrow, wear your favorite cardigan in the spirit of Fred Rogers and spreading kindness with others. And for those of you, depending upon your generation, I certainly remember Mr. Rogers, but our youngers that we have, our learners now, they know him as Daniel Tiger. So that's actually a cartoon that is modeled off of Fred Rogers' work. So tune in to PBS, check out Daniel Tiger, and please make sure you wear your red cardigan tomorrow. Thank you.
So I would note that my wife makes fun of me when I wear my cardigan around the house.
We will be wearing cardigans here tomorrow, and.
I will wear one too.
I even had a teacher say to me at the end of the day that she has about sixteen of them home, she's going to bring them in for her students, and I'm like, who has sixteen cardigans?
That's a lot of cardigans, thank you. Great, any questions for Principal Colley?
No, but thank you for taking the time and showing us your building.
My pleasure.
Very nice.
Very good. Thank you very much. Now, yes, Superintendent Culkin, the floor is yours.
There was a request at last month's meeting to learn more about what the SBSU literacy initiative is. So I've asked Assistant Superintendent Laura Madrow and our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Melissa Senefol, to kind of give you an update on our literacy initiative. Turn over this portion. Superintendent, report to them.
All right, we have a front.
I don't know if it's easier for the two of you to stand up at the mic, or if you want to sit at the table at the mic. It's up to you.
Stand, sit, stand. Does anyone want to come in? What do you want to do? Stand or sit?
We'll stand.
We'll stand. Is it good, just like this?
Sure.
All right. So we were asked to come here tonight to give you more of an overview of the literacy work that's happening in our district right now. And so we want to start you with the visual, which is the front side of this handout. And we have worked since we completed our literacy needs assessment in 2017, which every, all of you had participants from each building help to bring data together to craft our action plan. So what we learned from our needs assessment is that we need to have a system to monitor literacy instruction. So at the top, you're going to see the members of our district literacy team, which is comprised of literacy leaders or coaches. And it's a K through 12 committee. There's either representation from each elementary school on the literacy team, or at the ELA committee in the bottom right-hand corner. So the literacy team, the district literacy team takes care of the action steps that we've crafted. And they also are responsible for creating the vision statement that you'll find in the middle. It is the vision of the SBSU to create a culture of literacy in our community, where all students develop as independent and literate citizens. We believe the ability to read widely, think critically, and communicate effectively is essential in all curriculum areas to meet measurable goals for growth. So we use that to guide our work. And this particular team meets five times a year with Melissa Senefol, and to monitor that particular plan. And then you'll notice that we have branches on our visual. We have interventionists in many of our buildings. Their goal is to take care of the screenings that we do three times a year. And then they also monitor our tiered intervention bank, to make sure that we're using strategies that align with our Good First Instruction. We currently meet with them, we go around to schools and meet with them and their teams, so we don't have to pull them out. We can go to them and have a nice conversation. In the middle, schools are also asked to have a literacy team, because they also should have action steps. And a big part of their responsibility is to try to help organize parent nights that are literacy-focused. And then they also have action steps specific to each school. And then all the way again to the right, you see the ELA committee. They're a fun group. They have been with us. They're one of our oldest curriculum teams. They come together in the summer for a large block of time, and then we do need to touch base with them during the year, as literacy is, right now, a big focus. So now we're going to bring you to the backside of the document, and we're going to take a deeper dive. And the goal is to give you a little bit of information, and then allow you to ask us some questions. So we have a district continuous improvement plan, and goal one is academic achievement literacy. And we have three change ideas highlighted in bold. So we're just going to summarize each change idea and give you a little example of something we're doing related to that. So our first change idea is around leadership knowledge, implementation, and routines for literacy. The first bullet describes the training that we provide for literacy leaders and grant-funded coaches in each building. The Hill for Literacy is the vendor that we use. It's also a consolidated federal grant-funded Title II activity. And this group is learning how to use screening data and progress monitoring data to then make good instructional steps. They are also learning about the different components of reading and what assessments best measure student success. The next bullet, this year we're offering a leadership training for administrators. I am also, Melissa and I both sit in on those sessions with our principals and our associate directors, and we are back in school. And we are learning, what is the most current research in reading? I learned about the letterbox, which is on the backside of our brain, and how it connects to what we visually are collecting. And we're learning about the wiring in the brain. And then that's linked to supporting administrators, and how do you monitor in this year building?
So the next bullet is about that work with Hill for Literacy. I've been sitting in on this group for about two years now at Molly Stark and Benell. And to see the systematic way that they'll go through and look at all students and the data, and create a data visualization tool for the teachers to then make that decision professionally about all kids, whether it's enrichment or intervention, has been really exciting. And the growth that we're seeing in the schools where this is done is really feeding the teachers to say they're really excited about next steps. So when they get to see in six weeks, is it working, or do we have to do something different, they're really excited, and they're loving coming to these meetings. So that's been a great experience. The next bullet is about holding those bimonthly meetings that Laura mentioned in the previous with the coaches and the leaders, to make sure that we're really addressing those action steps. They're a really passionate, lovely group of people that feel very strongly about literacy in the entire district. And they want to make sure that we're keeping on improving and being better every, every year. And so they're a great group to work with.
So that, that first, the four bullets we just described are all about the leadership routines that we're, we're working on. And our second change idea is around tiered instruction. So we want to make sure that we're providing resources and then the background, instructional background information needed to deliver literacy instruction. So we've listed the key resources that we use. Wilson, under Wilson System, Foundations is used in our K through three classrooms, along with Reading Street. So Foundations helps to cover that phonics piece. And Reading Street is really being used to highlight comprehension and vocabulary and to support writing. Our interventionists are being trained in how to do Foundations extension lessons. So when a child gets Foundations, if they're struggling, we want to make sure they're getting an intervention that links to what they got in the first place. So we're making sure that interventionists have that training. Just Words is for older kids who have kind of phased out of Foundations, but they still need something linked to that, and it's also linked to Wilson. And then there is Wilson Training, and that's a smaller, a one-to-one or a small group intensive. So if you're a student that's struggling, we want to make sure that you're getting all of those components, and that the people providing those trainings have been trained and know how to implement. ERI sidewalks, so Reading Street. Reading Street was something that we thank you. You supported that purchase, and we now have it K through five, district-wide. ERI is linked to Reading Street. So again, it makes sense for kids' brains. You get Reading Street instruction, and then you can get an intervention that's linked to the tool that's being used in the classroom. That resource right now is focused, that intervention is focused on K through one. Read 180, you can go with Read 180.
Oh, Read 180, yeah.
Okay. Read 180 is a highly engaging program we're using in a lot of our schools. I'm thinking about going to visit Woodford. I went to visit Shasbury at another school. I visited Pownell, just to name-drop a couple of your schools. And I think that what I've seen the most is from the teachers and from the students, how they look forward to going and doing it. So these are kids who struggle with reading and comprehension and vocabulary, and they're really enjoying the process, and they're enjoying the program. And so that, that's my initial feedback of our, of our six to eight months now of doing Read 180. Do you want me to go on?
Sure, yep. So I think the last change idea is to make sure, which falls on my shoulders, but luckily I have a lot of people that have helped with that, and that's to make sure that we're providing professional learning in all of the things that you just heard about. And so what's been great so far with all of the things that you see, we've brought in outside people for professional learning. But we've also done a lot of making sure that our coaches can do embedded, ongoing professional learning in every single school. So it's not a one-done. It's an ongoing thing, because it might be something small that you need to go and find somebody in the building to say, how does this exactly work? I want to use the digital platform, and I know they mentioned it in that training a couple of weeks ago, and I don't remember any of it. Or it can be, can you sit down and model for me what that means in small group, because I'm comfortable with you, I know you as a coach, and I really want to learn more about it and expand and reflect my teaching. So that's been great of having those two pieces with professional learning, with all of those things with high-quality staffing.
So we hope your takeaway from this short overview is that, if you go back to that visual, we have to make sure that all the pieces of this system understand the direction that we're headed, and that we all have a similar message, because we're really interconnected as we meet the needs of the students that we serve. Questions? Yes?
How did you decide on the Hill?
Well, for literacy, that's a great question. So we are lucky to be connected with peers regionally and throughout New England. So when we're looking for a professional learning provider, we also vet, so we look for people that this is their area of expertise, and compare the services they can provide. This particular service, Hill for Literacy, matched the needs. It started with the needs assessment, that that was a service they could provide us, in terms of analyzing our entire system pre-K through 12, to collect data. And then they also could systemically start to help us build action plans. And then they have another component of their program where they could provide some of our professional learning. And the consistency has been great in having one provider, but you, you're looking for someone that matches the needs of your service. And then through the grant process, we do have to procure or vet them.
And if I could add one more thing, when do you know, when do you think you'll know whether this program works or not? One of my concerns is always, we put programs in place, and then we don't go back very effectively, or that history of my program back effectively, that the program works, and we're still spending money, and we're still producing that, but we don't achieve what we started out to do. When do you expect to see?
That's, yeah. So part of the systemic work we're doing, which, outside of a program, so part of the work you're doing is, you really have to make sure you have a tight system, because you are putting, the most important thing we do is make sure that our teachers are trained to provide literacy instruction. That, that right there is where we want to invest a lot of our resources. And so we're just beginning to, to really have a concise plan to do that. This is the first year I'm like, wow, we are providing professional learning in just these things. And we're going to get really good at this. And then over time, we hope to see change. So that's one. Part of our action plan was also then the purchase of a resource or a program, okay? That's one piece of it. So I think if I go back to what you're saying, we want to measure when we're monitoring data, which we are doing, over time. And one thing that we've been told is when you're moving a large ship, and we are considered to be a large ship, it takes many years. But we've been told we are on the road, because we have a clear plan for how we're going to get there. But it's the combination of putting money into the program and professional learning, and how our leadership functions, that we hope to see data over time. And it will be through those three screening windows that we have. So we're monitoring, we're looking, we're looking at data at the next principal's meeting. We're taking our screening data from the fall. We're going to put it on the table against our action steps, and we're going to monitor, how do you, how do we think we're doing, knowing that we're early in the process for this big, massive change we're making. But we, so we do also, I would say, I'm feeling pretty good that three times a year, we're going to look at data with our administrative team and this literacy team, and hope to, over time, be able to, to produce that. So it's big, it's the professional learning, it's the, it's the program, and then how we're choosing to adhere to how our system runs, all three pieces. But we do have a system for collecting and looking at data. And what I'm hearing is, we will be reporting out.
Well, I think also the efforts that we, we as a board, the district, the community of schools, and trying to create, helping to promote instruction in schools, is a little bit helps support academic-focused endeavor.
Correct. Yes. It's, it is.
Appreciate it.
That, I mean, we appreciate, that's the best part of, about, I love working in Vermont, is that Vermont's made the intentional choice of making sure that we have a tiered system, and we're balancing academics, behavior, and social-emotional learning. So those two things right now are happening side by side, for sure.
Anything else?
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
I sent you an email, or actually, a Carantini email, because I was at Lake Maury last Thursday, Friday. Pownell went to school. I had to call off school both those days, because they had, did not have water in the building. It was a pump issue, a 50-year-old pump issue. So it certainly got its life out of, out of that pump. What my understanding happened is, when the pump company responded, it was down, a bigger pump, and down further than they thought. So the first truck that they brought to haul it up the 135 feet couldn't do it. So that's why school got canceled again on Friday, so that they had to come back with a bigger rig to get the motor pump up out of the well. And they luckily had one within the vicinity, that they didn't have to wait for it to get here, and they were able to get water back in the building on Saturday. So thank you to Kevin for all the time that he put in, along with the well company, and to the principal, keeping me informed about the process. Because my concern was that if they got that pump out on Friday, and then it was not, when we're dealing with that age of a pump, when it's not readily available, it could have impacted even today. But luckily, it didn't. So that's why Pownell didn't have school for two days. Question I've already been asked, is, are they going to have to make it up? My, my answer is, we'll see. Most likely, I will recommend to the board that we don't have them make up the day, because they'll be under the, remember, we, we book 180 days, but Vermont law says 175. If I have them make up those two days, then we're going to have to come up with transportation for those two days, because buses did run that day. This would be similar to, two years ago, we had to cancel school at the middle school because of a flood issue, when some heating units let go, and we didn't have the middle school make it up. So we probably would not have the students make those days up, and the staff would be in for, you know, professional development or something like that. So the staff would report somewhere else, but we would not have the students make up. But it's too early for me to really make a definitive answer, to give a definitive answer on that, because it's really going to come down to how many snow days we have that could put, you know, put them in, if we're really late, we've forgiven those days before, rather have our students attend late in June. But right now, it appears that we wouldn't do it, as long as we're not going to get too much, too close to the 175, that they have to go to school.
Can the pump company guarantee another 50 years out?
That is incredible, isn't it? Yeah. You want to take a guess on it?
Wow.
Dick and I both mentioned Lake Maury, and I see Leon's in the audience, he was there too. That is, was the joint conference of the Vermont Superintendent's Association and Vermont School Board Association. I did come away with some new energy and assurances that I think we are heading in the right direction, particularly in our, our efforts in literacy. It's, it can't be stated enough how important that is, because I still, when I tour other schools, or other high school, and reports of students who are struggling with literacy, my question in my own mind is, how did we get this far and not address it? So I do think that our efforts, particularly in our elementary schools, and, and the board's to take credit for that, too. It's not just the presenters this evening, that the resources that you provided for. It's not just the presenters this evening, that the resources that you provide to the literacy, as I do, these, um, targeted walking tours of our elementary schools. Some of them are focused on literacy and the resources that I see that the boards have funded to put into the schools. And we're not done yet because I, you know, there will be, or our staff members will point it out to us in some of these targeted walking tours, how they have to share a resource because they don't have their own, uh, set of books yet. And it's helpful for me to see that when we're on the tour. Though I think maybe, we were targeted on our targeted walking tour that we were directed to the classroom that was sharing a bookset. Very strategic move by that principal in Pownell. So, uh, thank you for your report and thanks for the work that, that the district is doing in this, very important work. We're only going to couple of things I'll clear up with board members. I have a request from a board member that, uh, what is the efficient capacity of each school? I think that's a great question as we move forward. So I will get that and we'll give a report. You already received an email from me on that. And, uh, I know I'll probably get a different set of numbers if I ask the principal what the efficient capacity of their school is. First, uh, what we'll do is we'll go back and look at historical data, see what may been the highest number that school ever had. Cause as we go forward with some of the other work that we're talking that we need to do, everything from school choice to, uh, possibly make one of our schools a magnet school, it, it, it is important that we know what the capacity of that school is. Request from the chair, and I will, and I will, um, share this with all of you when I have it, to survey other Vermont, uh, superintendents and school districts. We have a listserv that I can put questions out to the superintendents and get, get back, uh, so that we can begin conversations, uh, about school choice. And possibly, as I said, uh, listing one of our designated schools as a magnet school, that would be then open enrollment throughout the district. These are all ideas that we want to talk about. So we're all also not looking to reinvent the wheel. So I'll put that out to the listserv and see if we have schools in Vermont that are already doing that and that they can provide some resources to us. The facilities committee mentioned the elevator. I did receive a draft, uh, this, really early this evening. There is a draft of the RFP for engineering services or architectural services to look at getting that in. So the draft has been completed. So Renee and I haven't had time to look at it and discuss yet. Are we ready to move forward or will we make any changes to that request proposals, uh, to get that critical need met in Bennington Elementary School? I have requests from principals, uh, for paraeducators for this school year, up to three. We, Assistant Superintendent Arbodaro and I have not determined if, uh, three is a valid number, you know, but there is concern, it deals, they're not special education paras, they're requests from building principals mainly to deal with social emotional behavior issues. So that if we strategically use these paraeducators, uh, we possibly could prevent, um, a student needing to, needing special education services going forward in the future, which is something that we really strive to do. But the problem is money. So I have, I don't have, I have requests for three paras from prin, from different principals in different buildings. I was going to walk those nomination forms into you this evening, but I have a very cautious Director of Finance and Operation, and I am in agreement with her. Cause when I get that request, then I meet with Renee and we look to see where funds are, because remember what I'm talking about, are positions that weren't budgeted for this year. And understand why they weren't. The budget process, like we're now meeting with principals for the budget process for next year. They can't possibly anticipate everything that's going to happen, what student's going to walk through the door, who may leave. So these things already happen. But what we already did last spring was add two paraeducators into our budget, one for the 611 classroom at Bennington Elementary and one here at Monument. I believe, well, maybe Molly, thank you. Either way, we added two paras that weren't in the budget. So we're already in the hole a little for that. Now, we have big budgets. So when you're saying you're looking for a paraeducator, my, my thought always is, well, we can find the money, especially if it supports a need that our, our principals have identified. But I can't sit here tonight and tell you that I think this, there's a couple of issues that, a couple of areas where we think there's potential money, but until Renee gives me the green light, I'm not going to come back, uh, with a, with a recommendation or a nomination form. One of the things that HR is struggling with, with the new financial software that the state so graciously handed down to us this year for free, um, it has encumbered, we believe over encumbered $200,000 or $200,000 plus in workman comp. So until we have that rectified and ascend that it really has over encumbered, um, I'm not comfortable spending that money. There is, uh, the Union Elementary District has $210,000 in contingency fund, which certainly would fund three paras, though I'm thinking that two might actually fill the need. And we're well into the school year, so it's not going to be a full salary. So, and where else did we have? Well, Jerry, not to panic you, but you know, Renee did mention your truck is still in the budget, but I'm not going there because I think we've said no to you three years in a row. Contingency fund, uh, it, well, there certainly is going to be breakage in salary. And what we mean by that is what we budgeted for somebody's salary and anticipated opening and we either hired less or somebody left and we replaced them with less, um, or less than we anticipated we were going to have to pay. There's money in those salary accounts. But it's still too early in this budget season for Director of Finance and Operation to give me, um, enough assurances that that money is free to spend. So I'm in the, um, difficult position of, uh, telling the principals, no, they wanted me, they had asked that I walk in nomination forms tonight to the board and I was prepared to do it, but, uh, not until I had assurances that the money was there. So we do have $210,000 in the contingency fund. I could, I, and I don't, I honestly don't think that we will spend it because of those other two reasons. I think the money will be there, but I also, you know, I'm not ready to, you know, sign over my mortgage and say, and commit to that. So I would, I would like, uh, the board to authorize that if the associate or assistant superintendent, sorry, I don't like to call you associate, Director of Finance Associate, Assistant Superintendent and the superintendent concur that, um, that these needs are valid because I'm concerned particularly about one, um, school that may need this, um, support staff member for a student before we can meet again, that I could have the authority to hire up to two paraeducators, knowing that I can't identify a funding source at this time, though I, for those reasons that I outlined, outlined to you, I, I'm confident we have the money, but I can't identify a source on a nomination form, which is what you require.
So what specific language do you need in a motion, Jim? Do you power you to do that?
That, um, that you authorize us to hire up to two paraeducators, um, for this school year, and then I would come back with, uh, non-forms, uh, for the next board meeting. If, but it may not even happen. I mean, I want to be able to tell the principals that I can react as quickly as possible. If I still don't feel that, uh, Renee needs more time to dig into this, that we have the funds available, I'm pretty, I, I'm confident that we do, but, um, I'm not the Director of Finance and Operation. So.
I can, I'll make, I'll make that motion with the caveat, just to spell it out even further, that Renee and Mr. Colkeen feel confident that those funds are there.
And you can include the assistants of Renee because she's going to vet the need of the position.
Okay, so a motion on the floor, is there a second? Thanks. Any further discussion of this? So hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you. You know, a couple of principals will appreciate that, uh, throw to confidence, but like I said, we may not, we may be back at the December meeting with non-forms for people who aren't already in the building, or they could be here, we don't know.
So Jim, am I not remembering correctly that there are already vacant parapositions in the district?
Special education.
Special education, okay. All right, all right.
So this is a, this is a local budget issue.
Okay, thank you.
I have one quick question, um, and I'm sure it's already, we're already on it, but I haven't heard anything about it as far as in this district, and that's Act 66, which is lead testing for all places of learning, um, that the state is required. Have we gone through that process of all of our buildings?
The schedule just got updated, so we're included in the next round. So it'll be December and January.
So Scott, I will add for the February meeting to revisit that. If we're up for December and, yeah. Are any further questions for our superintendent?
I have one. Under, he brought the subject up, so I would just like to add, um, the issue in Pownell, of course, this is, this board is all new and we all care for our buildings. I read it on Facebook that Pownell had a problem. And being used to having the phone call come to me telling me this is what's happening, in the first place, we feel disconnected to begin with. My suggestion, and this would be if any of our buildings have a problem, that this board be notified by you and you can send an email as long as we don't respond to you. It's, you're not, it's legal.
Did you not get my email on Friday and then on Thursday and Friday? We sent emails to all the boards though.
I only got the issue that the building was closed. I didn't, it didn't say why. And I was, people were asking me what's wrong with the school.
All right, I'll go back. I thought we did say that it was a pump issue and no water in the building, but.
You did it. You did. Jim, do you, do you know who sent that email out?
Karen sent it. Yeah, I dictated it to her from, she sent it out.
So maybe if we, I mean, I'm, I'm pulling it up right now because I, I know I was receiving it via email. Just wondering who was on the, on the distribution list, but, um, yeah.
I just think it's important that, you know, we, that we all are updated on what's happening to our buildings because now we're all one and we care all about all our buildings. And I know it's, it's new and.
I, I agree with you and that's why it was important for me to get that email to you, even though I wasn't capable of doing it physically myself.
So there was an email sent to all, each of us, um, sent via Thursday morning and then Thursday afternoon, we received the second email saying it's closed Friday too. Okay. So maybe we can, we can just make sure, can you?
I'll check the distribution.
Yeah, make sure that's the correct email on there.
Apologize if you did not receive it directly.
And maybe for anyone who is not getting emails regularly, maybe be in contact with Karen with your preferred email address. Maybe that's a way to avoid all this in the future.
Cause we can link your preferred to your SU, so we'll send it to SU, but it'll flip it to your preferred email.
So moving on, uh, the chair report brief, Jim already touched on it. So we have, there, there are a few things that we as a board are going to have to deal with. School choice is one of them. A few things we might want to deal with, and that's things like rezoning attendance, kind of catchment areas for our individual schools. Uh, and then things that we probably don't have to, but I think it'd be a shame for us to waste the opportunity. And that's for, you know, potentially creating a magnet school within our district, perhaps creating sort of specialties for each of our elementary schools, um, to go along with the notion of school choice. Uh, I, I just think we have, now that we have a few months under our belts and we sort of know the direction that we're going and we're figuring, we're sort of working out some of the bugs, we have a great opportunity to really change the shape of how we educate the kids in our, in our large community. And so, uh, Jim mentioned that I asked him to start pulling together some information about how else it's done around the state because let's steal good ideas if they're out there. At least so that over the course of this winter, we can be talking about different ideas. We can begin to sort of get a sense as to what, if anything, we want to do to shift things around. But I think this is a really exciting time to be on a school board, particularly at this sort of brand new entity. So we have work ahead of us, but I think it's exciting work and there's lots of room for innovation and creativity and I'm just looking forward to working as a group for us to figure this out. So that's it for the chair report. Yes, Dick?
At one time there were charter considerations, um, about where students will be educated, that those all dissolve with the merger. I think, I think Bennington specifically was, that's what I think of first, uh, so that they, something about.
They have attendance zones exactly.
Well, I guess I, I was under the impression that something in their charter, or perhaps some other town's charter, says something to the effect that we'll educate all our students within our borders or something along that line. I don't know if, if I'm just daydreaming that or not.
If, if I can just also add something that, um, these tours that we've gotten before, the meetings have been very helpful in shaping what's, what's going on in my mind at least. And, um, before, I, I would just make the recommendation that before we go too far down a path of having too many conversations that are forward thinking, perhaps forward thinking and, um, could change the way we, we do things, is that we have the opportunity to see all of the schools.
That's reasonable.
And if, if we need to move faster, then let's build a, let's build a driving tour in aside from the meetings and get this done, get it done. Because there's been, I've gathered a lot of insights in these first few meetings and these first few visits and, um, I think it's been really valuable.
And I, I thank you for that, Scott. I, I don't know that we have to move quickly on anything. We have two years built into the Articles of Agreement before we can talk about school choice or any of that. I don't think there's any pressure for us to do things like, you know, reassess attendance zones, things like that. So we do have time to play with. Uh, you know, winter times, it's time sort of being at home and surrounded by kith and kin, by a warm fire and who wants to do anything but read about school choice and magnet schools? I think that sounds like a lovely way to spend a winter evening. Yeah. So we have time and I, and I think it's going to be, it's going to be good stuff moving forward, for sure.
And I mentioned it not to accelerate it, but as I mentioned it last month, I think it's, if I keep putting it into people's minds, that these are some things that at some point we should be having discussions about, but not.
Yeah, I mean, I, there's parts of me that are think better, that think even bigger. So, right, based on what I've seen.
We, I'm sure there's ideas outside of this room that we should ask.
So speaking of, of our tours, so our next meeting is going to be at Pownell. So tour begins at six, meeting begins at 6:30. So that, and that will be the date of that's?
December 17th.
December 17th. Uh, December 10th, the second, the second Tuesday is the 10th. So December 10th at six o'clock for a tour of Pownell Elementary School. Great. Um, the last agenda item FYI, we have the, the student enrollment for November and the budget status report, both of which were attached to the packet. So we've exhausted our agenda, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Angie. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Great. Any discussion about adjourning? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.